I called the meeting, oh, of the Wilson Mills Town Council to order on July the 18th at 6:30. Let us stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Do you have any, Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to be in this place at this time. Father, we thank you that we have come together to do the betterment for our town and community. Give us all one mind, one accord, together. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. We need to have the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, if I could ask to add one item under the closed session, GS 143, 318, 11A5 regarding property acquisition.
And that would be item A and?
Yes, that would be item A and then the personnel item would be item B.
I move we accept the agenda as presented.
With the additions.
With the addition, yes.
Councilman Brown made the motion to accept the agenda and Councilman Dobbin made the second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? We have the minutes of the regular town council meeting on June, for June the 20th.
Make a motion, we approve the regular town council meeting, minutes June 20, 2022.
Second.
Councilman McGowan made the motion to approve the minutes. Councilman Brown seconded it. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As has it. At this time, we open for our open, our first open forum at 6:33. Anyone wishing to make comments, please come forward. Limit your comments to three minutes. Sign in, state your name, your address.
You're supposed to fix it for me. My name's Phil Wright, 11725 Ballan Road. I don't know how many of you know a, Jeffrey Evans, the funeral of his husband. Oh, he was leaving work and, and they were married, whatever, married and working or whatever. Created a fortune. And her husband died, been dead a couple of years and she decided that she would disperse her funds under three signs. So she gave them enough funds that would be, will take care of the rest of her life. And Christmas time is coming, they wanted to know, thinking what they could give their mother for Christmas present. And first says, I'll give her, I'll build her a new house. He goes out, he builds her a new house, all the luxuries in the world. Second says, I'll buy her a car. He buys her a Lamborghini. Ever pushed button in the world on it. The third, he didn't know what to do. He searched all around everywhere and Taiwan, he found what he wanted. A talking parrot. The parrot could quote the Bible from A to Z, front to back, not miss a word. He got that, spent thousands of dollars for that parrot to carry his, his mother on her Christmas present. Christmas come around. They were meeting and everything and the, she told the oldest one, said, son, said, that was a nice house. Said, I didn't need the house, the one I got, satisfied. Good shape, everything, I didn't need it. Told the second one, the nicest, the car's nice. Said, but I don't go, but just to the grocery store, maybe once a week, two blocks down the road, down there and come back and park. Said, that old Ford of mine was good enough. He said, but the youngest one has done outstanding. That he gave me a gift that was outstanding. Nobody had ever given me a gift like that before. Said, the best I'd ever had. So I've never tasted chicken that tastes that good.
Anyone else have any comments to make? If not, I close the open forum at 6:37. At this time, we're going to have a review of our strategic plan. And you're up. You've got all the answers right.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Be sure you cut your microphone off. Okay.
Yeah, can you hear me? It's great to see all of you again. So tonight I'm here just to review the strategic plan that we've adopted, worked together to draft over the past several months. So you have this in your packet. You also have, and hopefully have had a chance to look at the implementation plan that's in draft form that will help guide staff as they work to move forward on the plan, once you've adopted it. And just for some context, we've, this has been a process for about six months now. So it's been really great from Triangle J to work with all of you on this process. The, the plan that is in, or the framework that's in your agenda should not be different than the previous version you saw beyond the design. There's been some very minor changes in terms of wording, but nothing has changed in terms of context. But I'm very happy to take any questions on the plan or the implementation.
I have one question, and you probably can't answer it, Leanna probably can't, but it's, it's, it just stuck out to me. The water and sewer feasibility study, do we have any idea when that might take place?
That was one of the items that we are waiting to complete the agreement with Johnston County because that was what we sent back to them. Was that, that would be one of our first goals during this phase project would be to complete a sewer feasibility.
And so that, that has not started yet, right?
Right, not until the.
Till the agreement is finished. That, that's what I thought. I thought that agreement had to be finished first. Okay, that answers that question. Does council have any questions or anything that, that stands out that you want to? Um, I like that you put our mission statement and our vision in front of us so we wouldn't forget it. That, that stuck out.
You can make a gra, I'll make a graphic out of it and send it to Leanna.
Because, you know, we, we did a lot of work on those two items that day. And so when I read them, I thought, oh, they look good.
They sound good too.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
And Mayor, since this is a draft version, we've not had it on the website and for any of the public's, for any of the public members that, that have not requested a copy of it or were not at any of the special meetings, if you wanted to read those areas or some of our goals, that would probably.
We, at our retreat that we went to, the staff and the council met and through a long day of work, we came up with some very interesting things, I think, and very important. Our mission statement for the town is working together to promote and protect quality of life. And our vision is a vibrant community of vision, opportunity and growth that everyone is proud to call home. And these will be carried forth with our study, our strategic plan, and these will be something that we hope one day will be on our wall in our town, Newtown Hall. So I, I was really very proud of our staff and our council that we worked together and, and came up with these statements that really speak to our community. There's one other item that I think we need to clarify for council and I, I think that, I don't know if we need to do this in this, because this is a draft, right? Okay. Where it says, number five, go to number five. It says to plan and create a, a vibrant town center. I think we need to be sure that we're not talking about town hall. A town center is not the same as town hall. And I don't know how we need to reword that or re-verify that, because town hall is something totally different from a town center.
So you do have some items on town hall under a different goal, so that might indicate that they're separate, but we could also reframe that.
I don't know how we, maybe under there. Because a town center is the business center. It's not the town hall. It's a separate, separate thing altogether. So we need to be sure that council remembers that and, and that it's, it's spelled out specifically, I think.
Yeah.
Because when you look at it, some people think that town center means town hall and it's not the same thing. That was something that spuck out to me, so.
That's great.
I made little highlights of this as I went through.
That's perfect.
Okay, the other thing that I think we need to look at, council, is what is supposed to be done in 2022?
So I would definitely encourage everyone to look at the implementation document. This is put together a little bit more from the staff perspective, just so that staff know what's going to come from them on the work side of things, but it can definitely be used on the council side of things as well. And we could create a separate timeline for council.
No, I think this is great, because I think that we are depending on our staff to make sure that this is happening. And so I think it's, the way you've got it spelled out is very, very good. But I think that we need to, staff, you need to really make sure that you understand what council is looking forward to out of 2022. Because in my eye, that's what I see and that's what I want staff to do. And if I, if I'm wrong, tell me, because I, I think that's the way it's supposed to be.
Yeah, no, I think that is definitely what the, this is really so you know what's coming, I think. And I know there's a staff retreat on Friday, so they're going to be discussing this. And I would imagine you'll hear from them soon on those items. And you'll, one other thing I'll note, because you made me think of this, Mayor, on the town center comment, is you'll note that in this implementation timeline, there's some spaces that show where there's going to be probably supplemental planning that goes in, because some of these are fairly broad. And so that's a note really for staff to do some, so that might play into the town center item as well.
That, that would, that would.
So it can give some better context and planning around each item. Some are very concrete, some are a little bit broader and probably need some more.
And that, that's something that staff can work on that we retreat is, is gathering those, make sure that they are understandable, a little bit more, you know, concrete, like you said. Does anybody else have any comments?
Very well done though, thank you.
I was very impressed with it. When you put it together like this, it's, especially when you put the years and the place, what we want to see in 2025 and all this other stuff in place, it, it makes it look different.
Yes. Gives good structure to it as well.
And, and what's important to me is that we have covered all of this. I mean, it's not new. It's something that we've covered and we all are familiar with it and.
Okay. I, I would just like to ask, I'm looking at, at goal one, Newtown Hall, the maintenance facility, and then I'm seeing it all the way over in 2025. Is that, I mean, is that, am I just looking at that as, as a, as a long-term goal, this goal number one, or, I mean?
I believe that there, that 2025 was what was originally sketched out when we went through our facilitate, our retreats, as I think the end goal, but that may not, I think it depends.
Yeah, I think one of the reasons that we put it out to 25 was the timeline in some of the areas that we were looking at with the interchanges on Highway 70 or I-42. Being able to acquire the land, hire some type of architect to plan this building. I mean, these dates are certainly things that can move. The date timeline can move. The strategic goals in your plan are basically, this is what you want to do. This timeline is based on your discussions from the plan that we, this is like an absolute end date. Yeah, so that, these can be moved up as council meets on different options for a town hall. And it may or may not take three years for that to happen.
In other words, goal one didn't mean that that's where we're going to start. It means that that was just the goal, first goal that was put in place.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was, it was not the beginning, it was just.
I was just thinking, normally when I have a goal, my, my first goal is what I want to achieve first. And then I look down and I'm seeing 2025, it just, I mean.
That, that, they're, they're not in order as they're going to be done, okay?
In the strategic plan, these are just your main five focus goals.
Yeah, they're really.
For a strategy, right? Your timeline is really more what you're looking at and, and that's very liquid. I mean, it, those, those timelines can move as, as things change. In fact, that's what Elena was talking about earlier when she said some of these are italicized, because they're going to, once you start discussing them, they make, they may create new goals. They'll change the time on this implementation timeline. So these are some of the things, and, and a lot of these things in 2022 are what you talked about, that you delegated to staff, that we'll be focusing on at the, at the workshop this coming Friday. So that may create other things to add to this. It may change some of these other dates when we bring it back to you and discuss it again. But your plan is what you wanted it.
The goals are not going to change. The timeline might change.
Yes. And I would say, you know, all five goals are kind of happening at the same time, right? So I think the town hall item might be farther out, because it's a bigger item. So it just takes longer. But they're meant to be happening all at the same time, so no, no order of importance. It also makes it easier to just say, remember, this is goal five. Or goal three, instead of having to remember the name, what the goal stands for fully.
Well, I think, I think it's put together very good. Does anybody else have any questions for, or any comments? We don't need to vote on this?
We do, you need to adopt this as the strategic plan and, and once you adopt it, if, if you want to change the wording on that, you can, you can adopt it as your plan. We can try to figure out how to reword town center or add some wordage to make it clearer to the public.
I, I really think that we need to, to look at doing that, because most people, when they see town center, they're thinking town hall. So I don't know what else to call it. Or call it town vis, I don't know.
Business center.
Business center maybe, instead of a town center, because most people are thinking, when you say that, town hall.
We can, we can also add that to the workshop on Friday to try to come up with a different way to word it and work with Elena.
So, so we need a motion to adopt this as is with the, the change to that wording on town center.
Yep.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Jernigan, seconded by Councilman McGowan to accept the strategic plan with the change in the town center wording. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you all, it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Good job. I do not have any items that's separate from the agenda, Leanna.
Okay. The first item that I have is in your packet, is a letter of support for the RDU runway federal funding project, and I included some information for you in your packet. I think this was brought up a couple of months ago, but this comes from some funding that is available for a new runway at Raleigh Durham International. And the Triangle J Council of Governments is, is asking all of their members if they will to support this. We came up with some information on why that new runway and the accessibility to that is important for our area as well. And I drafted this letter. If there are any changes that you see need to be made or questions that you have, I'll do my best to answer them. Elena's still here, she might be able to answer a few that I can't answer. But this is just our, rather than a resolution, it's a letter requesting that RDU does receive this federal funding for this new runway.
Does anyone have any questions? I think it's sort of self-explanatory. That's a lot of money, by the way. $366 million federal funding for RDU. I hope they get it. I mean, the more runways they have, more business we can have coming into us. Do we need to vote on this, Leanna, and accept it, or?
If you will, just vote to, to approve this letter of support and then I will send it out tomorrow.
And you need to, it also requests you to email it or?
Yeah.
Email a copy.
I make a motion that we accept the letter of support for RDU runway federal funding support as written.
Councilman McGowan made the motion, Councilman Jernigan seconded it. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The only other thing that I have is to remind you that we do have a staff workshop this coming Friday. And this is for the staff to start working on some of these items from the strategic plan, sorry. Some of the things that you have delegated to staff is milestones for a town hall and town center, two different things. And now we will work a little bit on, on how to rename that. The types of services offered in town and things that we can do to increase community involvement. So those are, those are some of the things, not all of them. We're still working on the agenda, but we will be meeting Friday at the community building at Believers Baptist, just to get away from town hall. We've got a couple of staff members that were going to be covering town hall. We may have to close town hall for a few hours, but if we do, we'll definitely put that on Facebook. And of course, we're, we're going to be close by if, if there were, if the police department will be available as usual. But that is all I have for now.
Next item is, we have a financial report.
Good evening, council. In your package, you will find the June 2022 final fiscal year report. Thank goodness it's over. And I know when it begins. So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Sherry, a few of these item and items go over 100%. Is that going to correct itself with the audit?
Are you talking about expenditures or revenues?
I thought they were.
If there is any deficit in a, in an expenditure, whenever the auditor goes behind the scene and does his work, he will correct all that and it'll.
And I know some of them are just a little bit over 100% and I.
Yeah, it's because on the, in June, whenever we do our budget amendment, our final budget amendment, it's kind of like you play a guessing game with the numbers. And some line items is just inevitable that they're going to go over.
Well, I noticed there's not many, but there's one or two that's just a little bit over. So I was, I was thinking that you had said that that would happen, that the auditor would, would correct that.
Right.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Sherry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. Ms. Wendy? Our planning report.
Good evening. You have the staff report in front of you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have two, Wendy.
Okay.
Going down on the one, two, three, four, the fifth item, cottages at Wilson's Mills. Building is 90% complete. Do you have any idea when that's going to be handed over to the HOA?
They have not contacted me. Normally, we do a walkthrough with them for an inspection and I've not heard from anyone on that yet.
That walkthrough, does that include engineer?
Yes.
Okay. When it, at what point does it go to the, go from the builder as an HOA president to the community?
All of the building has to be completed before the builder can completely back out and turn everything over to the HOA.
Is, is that the point at which we get the, the fencing around the pond?
The fencing has to be around the pond before we take over the streets and the stormwater.
Okay, so when you do your inspection, if it's not there?
We don't take them.
Thank you. And the second question is going down to Parish Ridge. If I recall correctly, about three or four months ago, there was a problem between the developer and the HOA. There was some contention there about the, the pond or, or the, or, I'm sorry, it was erosion on that steep hill. Has that been taken care of?
They have given us a plan. They've submitted a corrective action plan to us. That has not been accepted yet. Brian is still evaluating that, because some of the things that were in that plan, he needed to research before he approved it. My understanding is he's still trying to get in touch with the developer to get some questions answered before he gives his answer to that.
Is the developer, to your knowledge, be, being scarce?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what the, the reason is they're not getting back with him.
Okay, the problem, am I correct, it's erosion on that steep hill going down to the retention ponds? And that erosion is not solving itself, so it's getting worse. Is that, would that be an assumption that's correct?
That is correct. However, they did go back and reseed and restabilize some of that bank, so it couldn't get a whole lot worse. But they have to redo a swell. When you first turn on River Camp, there's supposed to be a swell about halfway down to help channel the water and there's no swell there.
Okay.
So I haven't been out there since we've had all this rain recently, so I honestly don't know how much more erosion has, has taken place. That is on my radar of places to try to get though, with all the rain we're having.
Is that erosion, I've, I've been there and I've seen how steep that, that, that hill is. And with erosion and everything else, is that in fact, in your opinion, a danger to children that are around there? I mean, there's no fence, there's no way to prevent the kids from playing over there, obviously.
Well, one good thing about those detention ponds is those ponds are dry detention ponds. Water should not be standing in those ponds.
Yeah, after the heavy rains, it'll be there for a while, but it'll go away quickly.
And it should dissipate, because there is a creek further down at the bottom of that hill that everything should go to.
I guess what I'm looking at is not only the pond, but the whole thing, the, the steep hill, it's a very, very steep hill. I don't know how.
We're waiting, we're, we're still waiting for final answers on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
And Ms. Leanna is going to address the next two items under mine. These two ordinances that are on the agenda are not for approval. They were, they were actually approved by council on April 18th of 2022. So those dates on these need to be changed, but the actual written ordinance was not in your packet that month. So you're just getting a copy of it, there's nothing for you to approve, you've already approved them. There was, it was posted, it was, there was a public. There was, it was posted, it was, there was a public hearing held, and you've already approved them. But the actual written copy of the ordinance was not in your packet then, so you've got a copy of it now, but it should say at the bottom, eighteenth day of April, not July on both of these.
Can I ask you a question, just, just throw this out there? I don't know how I addressed the page. It's the ordinary property owned to Donald Bennett Strickland, twenty-one point seven seven acres. The first paragraph, the last couple of words there, what is the difference between from RMST Residential Main Street Transitional to MS Main Street? That's stuff, that's pretty new to me. I'm not familiar with that. That's a zoning thing, is it not?
Yes, it is. That was what, that was how it was rezoned, from residential Main Street to just Main Street.
Can somebody fill me in and educate me on what a residential Main Street Transitional is?
I'm going to let Wendy handle that question.
Maybe I should come see you in the office and not waste everybody's time, if everybody knows what it means. If you don't, okay, that's two of us.
Residential Main Street is where you have residences and businesses altogether.
Okay.
Regular Main Street is like your downtown business district.
In other words, you could have townhomes or something like that, single family, any resident in, in the Main Street.
Yes.
Residential Main Street.
But it's, it's dominant businesses.
And if you have apartments above the businesses, that's, that's residential Main Street Transitional still?
No, that's Main Street.
That's strictly Main Street, even though there are residences there because they're within the same building. Got it. Thank you. You got it? We're good.
The events report.
We are still doing the farmer's market every first and third Saturday. We had one this past Saturday, and it's kind of been hit or miss. It all depends on who's in town, who's not in town, if it's a holiday weekend. But we're sticking with it, and the people that come out are really enjoying it, so continue to spread the word.
I, I just want to say, I think the vendors, a lot of the vendors are really enjoying it and are committed to come in some of them, so.
And even on our slower days, the vendors have said, well, I'll see you in two weeks, and they, they're really sticking with us, so just spread the word and have people come out.
How do you, how do you spread the word to local farmers? That's what a lot of people are looking for, as opposed to arts and crafts. We're looking for, you know, like corn and tomatoes and things like that.
We reached out to several produce vendors, and they either didn't have enough that they think they could, that they could come to the farmer's market with, because they already put it out in, in other areas, or we just didn't get a response, so. But if you have anybody, send them my way, and I'll send them the application, because that's definitely something we want to have out there more, because a lot of people ask.
They don't even have to be farmers. They can be just somebody who's got a nice garden, like, like Tony, for example.
Right.
He's got a great garden up there on Sutherland Road, maybe, you know, set a table up and sell it to us as opposed to, through the store, for instance.
Absolutely, so. But if you have anybody like that, send them my way, and I'll talk to them. They would have to get all of the correct information from Department of Agriculture, just so all of our bases are covered, but I'll definitely talk to them.
Thank you, Wendy. Police Department, we got a new chief tonight.
I have a copy of the report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Third item down, Sarge. Installation and Training for Wolfcom Body Camera System. I thought we were using Axios.
No, that was, we looked at multiple different camera systems, and we went with the Wolfcom.
That's your body camera, right? I thought we went to Axios when we started it three or four years ago.
No, the first time we went with just the brand Body Cam.
With the what?
Body Cam was the name of the.
That's the brand name, okay. Okay, very good. Just curious. Thank you.
How are the cameras working? Are they installed at the park and?
Yes, as far as I know, they're up and running now.
Okay, that's, I just wondered if they were, everything, everything's working at the park and at Mill Creek?
Hundred and sixteen vehicle stops, very good. I like that.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much for filling in. Okay, public works.
You guys have my report. Any questions?
Me again. Fifth item down, remove window in conference room and install new sheet rock with paint. Which window is that?
There was a little sliding window between the front office and our conference room we had.
Oh, okay.
We took that out and just filled it in.
Okay.
Looks very nice.
Okay, I was curious. Going all the way down, regarding, nothing that's in here, but regarding the park, is there something in the rental contract? And maybe somebody else can answer this. Is there something in there stating that they must remove all signs, posters, tape, balloons, staples, nails, screws, et cetera, after they finish?
You mean someone who rents the park?
Yes, exactly.
They are supposed to, and then whenever they rented it and we go out there and see whether they've cleaned up their mess, we get back in touch with them if they have not.
Okay, maybe I should have gotten you, because I went down there a couple of weeks ago, and I don't care, I took posters down and pulled out a lot of nails, staples, a lot of tape.
Please let us know if you see that.
Yeah, no balloons, but there's still a lot of screws that are, that are in, yeah, thank you.
Let us know if you see anything like that afterwards. Sometimes when it's on the weekends and we don't get anybody out there until Monday, it doesn't always look the same, but if you find something over the weekend, please notice, notify us, and we'll make sure we contact them.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Patrick? Thank you, Patrick. Does Town Council have any comments, anyone?
I promised to have you a letter to sign. I'll have that next month. If you want to ask me why, we'll talk about it later.
Thank you, David. No comments. We will open our second public forum for anybody who would like to make a comment.
It's me again.
Pull it down a little bit, Fay.
Okay, I want to know what.
Name, address.
My name is Fay Wright, seven twenty-five Paratton Road, Clayton, North Carolina, two seven five two seven. What is supposed to be in a town center?
Businesses.
What do you mean businesses?
Okay, a McDonald's, a, a.
Grocery store.
A grocery store.
Pharmacy.
A bank. That's the town center. That's not the town hall.
Oh. Well, the way you're talking about it, it's going to be a building.
No, it's, it's a center.
Okay.
It could be multiple buildings in an area.
I wanted that to be reworded because this is what I have heard.
It, it's more like, Ms. Fay, it's more like a commerce area.
Right.
It's more like an area where you would go to bank, or you'd go next door to the grocery store, or you'd go three blocks down. Like a Main Street.
I can't even think of, over here, where the Mayflower's at, something sort of like that.
Could be.
Yes.
I mean, it's hard for, it's, it's hard for me to, and I understand where it's coming from. There's folks, other folks that probably wonder as well. But until, until, till the, something is laid before this, the, the planning, and then, then it makes its way to here, it's hard for us to specifically say exactly what it's going to look like.
Well, sounds like me, it ought to be a little shopping center, says Town Center.
Where you don't really.
Well, but it's going to be, it's going to be housing as well. It, it could be, like David was saying, it could be a Domino's on the bottom floor, and on the top floor it could be two or three apartments. So, so to say it's just a Rose Manor Shopping Center or, or a White Oak, I don't think any of us can say that. Because we, we've not had anything laid before us to, to say, yeah, this is what it's going to be. I mean, you just have to make preparations for, for what if. I mean, there's, and I know that's hard, it's hard for me to put my mind around as well. But, but it's, it could be, it could be multiple structures, it could be one structure, it's going to be a multiple thing.
Okay.
I don't know if that helped or maybe the water anymore.
Well, it changed my mind from center to a shopping.
It's more like commerce area.
Yeah. Okay, my next question is, we need a town hall. Why do we have to wait till the highway's fixed? Say, forty-two state, International Forty, Interstate North forty-two. Why we got to wait till then to build a?
You got to buy land.
And there's none on this side of the?
Oh, there's some on this side, but people don't want to sell it.
Because that's not Wilson Mill on the other side.
Yes, it is. It is Wilson Mill.
The people around here know it's Wilson Mill.
But it's Wilson's Mills. More Wilson Mills is on that side of seventy than is on this side now.
As far as houses.
As far as land mass. Because you don't consider Wilson Mills just houses or.
So that could be sound.
Well, let me just say this. I'm a lifelong resident of Wilson's Mills, fifty-two years, and.
I can date you.
And, and yes, you can. I'm not going to argue with that, Mayor. But we, we, I, I think, I, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but, but I think, I, I know that I'm, I'm constantly looking at areas that I think would be good for a town hall, not just now. But if we're going to make that investment with town, with, with town folk tax dollars, then we've got to look beyond, beyond two or three years from now. So it, it's got to be something we can afford, but it's got to be something, and, and honestly, whether it's on this side of seventy, that side of seventy, it doesn't matter to me. We got to have a town hall at some point.
Sometime soon.
And, and to, to limit ourselves to one geographic area, it, it is, it, it is, it doesn't make the, doesn't make the process any easier. So we have to look at what's available, what's available that somebody might want to sale, and then not make a fortune off the town, and something that we can afford to proceed with, but it's going to, it's going to benefit the town years down the road. So will it be on this side of seventy or that side of seventy? Who knows? Who knows?
In other words, us old folks probably won't never see this because it's going to take too long to get.
I mean, we were talking about it just a minute ago, by twenty twenty-five, so hold out there another three years and you'll be good.
Them roads ain't going to be done, but you go by there and it's, they ain't working on them roads. You go by there, it's sprinkling rain, they'll be working on them.
Yeah.
But we don't have anything to do with them.
So, so it's going to take them forever. I thought it was just supposed to be two years that fixed them. It's going to take them more than two years the way they're going.
No, but you hold in there another three years. All right.
What?
I said, hold out another three years. That's our strategic plan, by twenty twenty-five, so.
I don't know.
Ms. Fay, getting on the construction part. You ain't never going to see the construction stop now that it started. We're going to be just like Raleigh.
Does anyone else have any comments? I'm going to close out open forum at seven fourteen. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Councilman McGowan made the motion, Councilman Jernigan seconded it. All in favor? All opposed? Leanna, we need to move from up here, don't we?